All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, welcome everyone. Tom, click the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Your.
Baskin. Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Uh, we have a call, Mayor. Thank you, Tom. Before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to introduce An Lee. He's our newest honorary council member. An will be with us for the next six meetings. He's this happy all the time. An, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, my name's An. I use he day pronouns. I have been at Homestead City for five and a half years. I'm also part of the Human Rights Commission, so I'm excited to learn from everyone on council, as well as the board and everyone in the city of Austin. So, thank you for having me.
Thanks, An, welcome. All right, item number one is a motion looking for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, the motion carries. Item number two, looking to approve the minutes from our September 5th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'd like to welcome under item number three, recognitions and award, Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities' presentation from Liz Waifel. Liz, welcome to Austin.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm entitled to say it or not. I actually, and I've had like four cities this summer, like, yeah, like, oh, we forgot. So I winged it, but yeah, I'll do it, so.
I was in there.
Okay, so do I need to do something, or? I don't have it on laptop.
They have it on there.
They have it on there. Oh, they have it on there, so I can't see it, okay.
We don't have.
Yeah, sorry.
Tom, we'll share.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's on your iPad.
It's on your iPad.
It's on your iPad, so, um, thank you. Uh, hi, thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. I think most of you know me, but for those who don't, my name's Elizabeth Waifel, and I'm an attorney lobbyist with Flare, Dean, and Hook here on behalf of the CGNC. I think most of you are familiar with our organization, but for the audience, we are an organization of more than 100 cities across the state working on issues that really impact the rural areas. And Austin has been a very long-time active member. We've had multiple city council members, staff, and mayors on our board. It's, Austin's been an extremely important part of our organization almost since the beginning. We work on issues like local government aid, environment, and energy, economic development, transportation, annexation of land use, and labor and employment. Now, we're going to talk about this past session. We had a lot of goals that we wanted to achieve, and I'm going to talk to you today about some of those that we achieved. But I'm going to be honest, that report we handed out contains a lot more. A lot happened this session, and there's no way I could possibly cover everything. So I'd urge you to take a look at that report later, including the overview of what we accomplished. But top legislative priorities included increasing LGA, getting a better formula, tying into LGA, getting a bonding bill done, trying to get money for leveling inventory and replacement, permanent funding for city streets of all sizes, corridors of commerce, money for childcare, as well as money for housing. Now, this, this was an interesting legislative session. You'll see kind of on the presentation, a little bit of a cartoon there, but honestly, it felt like that sometimes. There was a lot of competing priorities. You know, we had a trifecta where all of it was controlled by the DFL, but that, even when you have one party ruled, not everyone gets along. So you had some of our part priorities, the DFL had their own priorities, a lot of other interest groups had priorities that came in there, and we saw kind of what sorted out in the mix. A lot of it was good. There were some things we were not happy with in the end, but overall, pretty decent results for Greater Minnesota. Now, one of the big aspects of the session apart from the trifecta was that there was a historic budget surplus. You could see the numbers in your presentation. It was projected to be $17.45 billion, which is a large number. One of the challenges, particularly on things like LGA, however, was that most of that was considered one-time money, not ongoing. So not all of that was available to increase, to add to LGA and other priorities like that. The trifecta we had did pose some other unique challenges. I'm going to be honest, fastest, craziest legislative session I've seen in the 15 years I've been at the Capitol. It was, it was crazy. It was really hard to keep up, and sometimes I think in situations like that, policy's not always crafted as carefully as it should be, as I think some of our cities have been experiencing this summer. One of the other big challenges we ran into is that the DFL majorities, you know, the population has shifted, the political population has shifted, so the DFL majorities are now dominated by metro area members. And that did come through in a number of the things we were working on, particularly some of the areas that I work on, like environment and energy. I'll talk about that a little bit more. The other challenge with having a trifecta is that, you know, there's no backstop for some of the potentially harmful proposals. We didn't have to, in some areas, we would need, like, either the governor's office or the Senate to help us, but that did make it challenging at times. Now, LGA, that was, again, our biggest ask this year, where you're looking for $150 million added to that, updating the formula to make sure that it continues to work for our cities, as well as adding an inflation and population growth. One of the challenges we faced was that, again, there was a lot of different priorities out there, and there was only $3 billion tax targets. And that was going to have to be, you know, you're, you know, tussling with folks against things like child independent tax credits, public safety aid, and housing aid. Now, the governor came out with his proposal. For those of you who were at Legislative Action Day, you may remember his reaction to our reaction. We were not excited, he was not excited with the fact that we were excited. I think he did kindly, like, make up, but he did increase his proposal to $40 million after hearing us loud and clear. But, you know, obviously, that wasn't our target. We had mayors from across the state come in and testify, vote the House and the Senate. And so we saw a range when the final tax bills came out in all the different bodies in terms of what they would support. The governor's office and the Senate wanted a $40 million increase with no inflation adjuster. The House was much, much closer to what we wanted, and quite frankly, their number would have been perfect because it would have had the inflation adjuster, and we could have gotten, you know, ahead with that. But as happens in most legislative sessions, everything comes down to the end in a compromise. I think we got a pretty good deal. We got $80 million more. I mean, that means almost $1 million more for Austin, as you can see on the next slide. But we didn't get that inflation adjuster. That's something we will continue to work on because your budgets go up every year, the costs you face go up every year. And for LGA to do its job, we need that inflation adjuster. But $80 million, you know, is really helpful to our cities, and hopefully, it's helping on your budget as you're moving forward. Bonding, I don't think I need to tell you that it's been challenging to get a bonding bill done. No, no bonding bill in '21, no bonding bill in '22. It was interesting watching it go through this year. You know, it felt, early on, maybe we were going to just get it done at the beginning. The House passed it with a, you know, more than a, I think, they had 21 GOP votes in addition to the DFL votes, but then it went over to the Senate. You have to have votes for both parties because it requires a supermajority. And the GOP Senate decided to, that they wanted some other priorities as well. So this kind of tussling went back and forth. It got to be a little scary towards the end because the DFL said, okay, if you're, you know, Senate GOP, if you're not going to play ball, we'll pass $1.3 billion all cash proposal. And that, quite frankly, would have hurt a lot of our communities. There would have been much less money for priorities like, you know, water, wastewater, BPI. And so it was kind of, you know, a scary threat. The CGNC stepped forward. I'll be honest, our letter had a bigger reaction than, I think, almost any letter I've seen us do in 15 years I've been lobbying. You know, I just really, we kind of, you know, pointed out to the legislature they needed to make some choices, and they needed to go forward with a bonding bill. We did that, several of the trades unions did that. Pressure from all of you elected officials finally made a difference, and we got a bonding bill done. And they also did, the DFL also agreed to $300 million in nursing home aid, which I think was a very important priority, and it was, you know, it was good that they held out and got that done. So we did end up with the largest bonding bill ever, although I call it bonding, about half of it was in cash. We saw $208 million go to the PFA, a top priority for us, plus much more than that to individual projects, as you know, money for housing, childcare, local roads and bridges. And I do, again, want to point out what were some of the important factors that went into there. Honestly, it's the pressure from local officials like you, working with us and other stakeholders that really helped push it over, pushed it over at the end of the day. You know, that threat of a cash bill was also, you know, kind of scary, but I, I can't emphasize enough how important it is, that active engagement to get these things done. Environment, again, that's what I spend a lot of my time on. But I got to do something up, I shouldn't say other than, in addition to wastewater this year, and that was lead pipes. And as you may know, no safe amount of lead in drinking water for children. And so the EPA is requiring all cities to map their lead lines by October 2024. We saw close to $900 million in ongoing funding to try and get all of the lead lines out across the state. I think we ended up with a pretty good first step in that, $240 million. And that will help all cities across the state. All cities will be eligible for this money, which will be used to replace the lead lines on both the city side and importantly, on the homeowner's side. Because if you only do the city side, you can have actually more problems. And it will also, 10% of that will also go to mapping it and inventory grants to help cities get that done. As I mentioned before, historic investments in water infrastructure programs, I don't think I need to tell Austin how important putting more money into those programs, both to the PFA individually is. But we also, you know, if you look at the next page, you can see a little slide of me getting mad there. And I play defense quite a bit, you know, both in front of the scenes and behind the scenes. Again, like I mentioned, there was a, you know, with the metro majority, they had a lot of things they wanted to get done. And, you know, a lot of policy proposals that I don't think they really thought through the impacts to Greater Minnesota. I think they knew how it would affect the metro and just said, full steam ahead. There were proposals that would have really impacted the PFA funding, shifting a lot of it into the metro area. And there were other just policy proposals, like this cumulative impacts proposal that would have made that happen. It was really challenging. So we spent a lot of time narrowing the scope of permit changes that would have hampered growth and economic development, while still ensuring that, you know, the environment is protected, because obviously, that's important as well. But we had to spend a lot of time on that, and I anticipate that's going to be an issue. Again, the session is really paying attention to these proposals to make sure they're thinking about the impacts on Greater Minnesota. Looking forward to the legislative session. Now, this is a real bonding year. We are really hoping they get back into the pattern that they're supposed to be, doing a bonding bill, in large bonding bill in the even years, smaller around the out years. So we'll be pushing for that. We could be seeing more constitutional amendments proposed. If the economy keeps chugging along, we could see zero-plus and zero-plus funding. I also anticipate there will be fix-it items from the 2023 session. Like I said, when you're doing that much legislating that fast, sometimes mistakes are made, and I don't know what will be up for that, but I anticipate there will be. The fun starts on February 12th, and it's an election year, which always makes interesting, you know, activities, both public, private, and at the Capitol when that's coming. Now, upcoming events. As you know, we have three major events a year. Our next event is the Fall Conference in Wilmer. Hope to see some of you there. Legislative Action Day, always the most popular. That's up in St. Paul on the March 20th. And this year, our Summer Conference, a little closer to you guys this time. It'll be in Wake Park and St. Joseph's. So we hope you can join us. And that's all I have. Like I said, that was a lot of information, even more in the packets. It was a crazy session. Any questions?
Well, first off, Liz, on behalf of the city of Austin, we really appreciate the resourcefulness of the Coalition and what you provide for us at a phone call, at a text, at the last minute. You guys are highly organized, and you do a wonderful job. So thank you for what you do, and I know we're the beneficiary of all that work, so thank you. Counsel, anything for Liz? Craig?
Liz, they know they enacted a moratorium on local option sales tax. That's something we're looking at. Do you think that that would be sustained in 2024? Or options for that reconsideration possibility? Or what insight could you give on that?
One insight I have is I am going to follow up and give you better insights from the folks who do that area. I do know that it is going to be more challenging. We have, you know, it used to be that, I think, some of the holdup was in the, I don't even remember which was in the Senate or the House. It hasn't flip-flopped this year. And I, again, I'll be honest, I used to spend a lot of time in tax committee, but I spend no time in there now. It's all environment and energy. I think it's going to be challenging. I'm hoping maybe they can work some things out, but I think it will be challenging. I'll ask Brad and Shay for their opinion, because they really do follow up closely.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a good question. Keep getting stumped at City Health.
Liz, is there anything, first of all, I mean, a huge thank you. I echo everything that the mayor and Craig have said, because you guys are fighting the good fight in St. Paul. Is there anything that councils like us can do to help as you guys educate, you know, especially more like urban and metro area legislators on, you know, to help your job become easier to not have to totally re-educate them every time?
You know, it's, I would say, you know, helping, you know, honestly, for the extent, you know, metro legislators, helping them understand that things do hit Greater Minnesota differently is helpful. I think helping your, you know, I'll be honest, for example, I'll use environment as an example. That's because that's where I spend the majority of my time. And I think sometimes the challenge gets to be that there's very much, like, black and white thinking. Like, you know, if you criticize something, that means you're opposed to the environment. But if you're proposing something to be done, that means you're some kind of crazy left-winger. And I think that a lot of people, when it comes to environmental issues, actually do care, and they want things to be done right, but they also understand that we need to function. We kind of need growth in our areas. And so I think, honestly, educating legislators on both sides of the aisle, like, you know, you know, you're, if you've got GOP legislators educated coming in, like, no, we do, we do appreciate the importance of the environment. Some things need to be done, they just need to be done right. Because I do think sometimes that sort of black and white, you know, thinking really does color it on both sides, which makes it harder to actually get some of the things done that we need to get done. And because there are, you know, there's a lot of issues like that, where I think honestly, reminding, you know, to spend, you know, your legislators, other legislators, that, you know, also reminding them to talk to people in the other party. I mean, and again, that goes for both parties. It is astonishing to me sometimes, sort of this, like, this knee-jerk reaction that, you know, they're in the other party, everything they say is wrong. So that would be one thing. Again, that's sort of a longer-term, personal sort of connection thing, but that's really how you can make a difference, is that, you know, we will get things done a lot better if everybody's talking to each other, at least trying a little harder, so.
All right, thank you, Liz. Appreciate you coming down. Enjoy your travels back up to the metro.
Thank you, and I hope to see you all in Wilmer or St. Paul.
See you in Wilmer, right on. All right, moving on to item number four is a motion for the consent agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under petitions and requests, we have a resolution of item number five, setting the 2024 proposed tax levy and adopting a proposed budget for 2024 taxes. Tom, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, council's discussed over the last couple of months the proposed budget and tax levy for payable 2024. Again, after tonight, after September 30th, you cannot increase that tax levy except for a debt issue and some special items. You can only decrease it. So seeing that this is our last scheduled meeting for September, counsel, tonight you're being asked to approve a proposed tax levy for 2024 and a budget. Based on the discussions we've had over the past, we're looking at reducing the documentation you have in front of you that says as a tax levy of $9,700,000. We're looking at reducing that a total of $318,000 to a proposed tax levy of $8,752,000, which is a 5.66% increase next year, which would then change the proposed budget to $46,006,001.05. Public hearing date, truth and taxation hearing date is proposed for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 6 o'clock. So based on the discussions we've had in the past, that's what we are looking at proposing for 2024. I certainly can answer any questions you may have.
Tom, I think you went a little fast for some folks in the back who might be taking notes. So just to be clear, at our last meeting, we were sort of at a 9.93% increase, and our current increase at this point that we're proposing to pass is down all the way to a 5.66. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would make a motion that we take it actually down to 8.6, or $8,622,000. So that would take contingency from, I think we have 550 right now, and take that down to 100,000. So that's about a 4% increase.
Second.
What was your dollar amount?
$8,622,000.
Motion by Baskin, okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to bring it to, what was it, 4.0?
$8,622,000.
Okay, and we have a second by Mr. Baker?
Yes.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Resolution, is this a roll call?
So, motion by Councilmember Baskin, second by Councilmember Baker for a tax levy of $8,622,000. An aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Helly.
Nay.
Posma.
Nay.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Nay.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution fails, 4-3, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there another resolution someone would like to bring forward?
I would move the resolution at the, I believe it was 8752 that Tom mentioned.
With the, that's the 5.66.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go 566, 8.752. Tom.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
Nay.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Nay.
Motion passes 4-3, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate all the work that everybody's been doing on this, and I think that's substantially different than 9.93. So 566 is something that council, as we vote as one, and that's, it can go lower, but it cannot go higher than that after August. What, September 30th, it's locked in?
That's right.
Well, we'll file the reports tomorrow with the county, so it's locked in tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. Item number six is a motion approving the placement of a stop sign. Oh my goodness, am I reading that right? On the westbound service road at intersection of Wolfhund Avenue West and 22nd Street Northwest. Stephen.
Yes, we received a request from a homeowner in that area concerned about accidents and visibility. We did review it, presented it to council at the work session, and would recommend putting in a stop sign on that service road as you described.
All right, council, any questions for Mr. Lang? If not, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, stop sign will be placed. How long will that be, Stephen? When will that be placed, are you thinking?
It'll be a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Item number seven is a motion increasing the sick leave for fitness, maximum amount to $2,000. Craig?
I thank you, Mayor members. We haven't increased this since 2004. Wanted to update that, move from $1,000 annually to $2,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions for Craig?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution accepting these donations into the city of Austin. We have a gift of $250 from the VFW for Family Fun Night at the Pool, $104 from Moore County Water and Soil Prairie Grass for North Dresner, and a framed art piece by Mary Ann Sendic Wonderland, from donated by Tim and Bonnie Reitz. That'll be hung in the Bonnie Besse Reitz Conference Room. And framed art by Meg McCormick, donated by Patrick McCarvey, and that'll be hung in City Hall. With those, we thank them for their donations and looking for a resolution accepting them.
So moved. Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is a motion setting the fall yard waste program from September 23rd to November 26th, 2023. Stephen.
Each year, we provide a community drop-off site at the Cook Farm or Creekside Commercial Development Site. This year, the dates are, as you described, September 23rd through November 26th. The site is open for the public to drop off seven days a week, from dawn until dusk. We accept leaves, grass, and garden trimmings. We do not accept branches, and we also ask that you take care of your bags. If you bring out your leaves in bags, that you put those in the garbage cans or take them back with you. So this is a free community program, and we utilize the compost that is produced from this in some of our own projects. We also provide it for free to residents at the skate park when we have compost available in the spring. So it is a good program, serves the public with a site to dispose of their leaves, and also returns it back to them as compost for their gardens.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang on this? If not, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the change order number one with Rice Lake Construction Group on the wastewater treatment plant project. Stephen.
It was about a year ago that we awarded the project to Rice Lake Construction. There was about six months of planning and ramping up for the project by Rice Lake, and work started in March. Now, as we're beginning to work through construction, things, changes to the overall project have been identified. Some of those changes are additional costs, and some of those are actually cost savings to the overall project. The way that we work through this process is contractor or engineer will identify areas where improvements can be made. That'll be identified through a request for, or an RFI, request for more information. Then from there, if there is cost associated, it would turn into a work change directive. Those are approved administratively to keep the project and keep the process moving. And then periodically throughout the course of the year, we'll compile multiple work change directives into a change order, bring those to council for formal approval. Then those will be incorporated into the overall project scope, and payments for that work will be made. Before you tonight, we have eight work change directives. Before you tonight, we have, uh, eight work change directives. Um, again, some of those are expenditures, and some of those are savings to the overall project. When we split up the cost between the domestic fund and the industrial fund, the domestic share of the change order is, um, an expense of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And on the industrial side, there is a cost savings of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. So, with that, I would, uh, recommend or request approval of this change order, um, for processing.
Thank you, Stephen, council, any questions for Mr. Lang?
Motion to approve, and would, you're doing it all at once, right? On both sides?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
You bet.
Baskin?
Abstain.
Fisher?
Aye.
Pashusta?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes six, zero, with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you, I have number eleven, is a resolution approving a grant for the design of an airport teehanger, Stephen.
Council previously approved a ninety percent federal grant for design of the teehanger project. This is a companion grant from the state that would pay five percent of the overall project cost, that making it, uh, a ninety-five percent, uh, funded project, and the remaining five percent is covered by the city. So, we would recommend approval of this MINDOT grant to fund a five percent of the overall teehanger design project.
Thank you, council, questions for Mr. Lang on this? If not, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Yep.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Pashusta?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven, zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number twelve, is a motion reviewing a fence appeal from Chris Heikel, uh, Holly?
Mayor and council, this property is located at twenty-eleventh, Thirteenth Avenue Northeast in the Nature Ridge area. During the September twelfth meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a fence appeal, uh, submitted by Ms. Heikel, uh, for proposed six-foot privacy fence installed on the property line of the rear side yard. This city ordinance requires a twelve-and-a-half foot setback from the property line, uh, for privacy fences on corner side lots. After review with six Planning Commission members present, uh, the vote was, uh, six, four, six, uh, six, four, zero against. This recommendation comes from a discussion of the impacts on neighboring properties, public right-of-way, review of practical difficulties, and reasonableness of the petitioner's requested use. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions for Holly? If not, looking for approval or denial of the fence appeal?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I have number thirteen, is a motion reviewing a fence appeal from David Lammers, Holly?
Uh, this property is located at thirteen hundred nineteenth Avenue Southwest, uh, along Twelfth Street, uh, Southwest. During the, uh, September twelfth meeting as well, this, uh, individual requested, uh, fence appeal for a privacy fence, um, over six feet tall, uh, installed on the property line of the rear side yard. The property is also located on a corner lot, uh, city ordinance again requires a twelve-and-a-half foot setback area for privacy fences on corner lot side yards, and also requires additional council approval for any fence over six feet tall. Um, in reviewing this, uh, I got a comment from our city engineer, Mr. Lang. He asked that I, um, add some additional photos to the packet for you to review. Um, he wanted to just highlight some things about that intersection that are unique, so I'll just let him, uh, explain what he wanted to add.
So, the, the last request and this request are the same. It's a corner lot, there's, there's requirements for a twelve-and-a-half foot side yard setback for a corner lot for visibility. The last one that you just approved is in a very quiet neighborhood. This one in front of you is, th- this is new information, wasn't presented to the Planning Commission, um, so take that into consideration as well. But, uh, this intersection is, we're on, uh, Twelfth Street Southwest or Highway one oh five, nineteenth Avenue leads to South Gate School, which is three blocks down the street. So, it's, it's a very different situation than the other one that you just reviewed. So, that's why we wanted to provide you some visuals of what it will look like if you are a vehicle approaching that intersection, what your visibility is if this fence appeal is approved tonight, so just wanted to provide you some more information on that.
The Planning Commission, uh, did review this, they, um, let's see, uh, let's see, the fence, proposed fence is, uh, seven foot tall, uh, in some areas, potentially, there's one area where it wa- might be pushing eight foot tall. Um, the petitioner did start the project, uh, prior to the appeal to Planning Commission. Um, he had, was some, there was some confusion, I guess, when he looked up the information online, um, if a, uh, a fence can be exempt from the building code, which he had not, uh, realized that the fence was still subject to our zoning codes. Um, once we realized that, uh, he did not have a permit, then we required that he bring a fence appeal to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did at the time that they reviewed this matter, uh, recommend approval to the council by six, zero. The council could approve, deny, or approve with conditions. This, uh, matter was presented in a time period within which we would have the opportunity to send it back to Planning Commission for further review if the council did so decide. But, the, um, the Planning Commission did, uh, approve, and it was my understanding that there were members that did drive by and look at this parcel.
Craig? Uh, Holly, does the seven foot, does that create precedence issues for us in other areas?
Um, I did not see any issue with the seven foot tall fence.
So, would we allow it in other, in other areas?
If they brought it to Planning Commission and council, it would be, have to be reviewed.
And then it says it's composite boards, it's not sheet metal?
It is actually...
It's sheet metal.
It is sheet metal.
Metal.
Um, so the individual has a, a very, um, like, maybe four feet on the west side of the house, um, and then has thirteen feet on the east side, but that would, with the twelve-and-a-half foot setback, that would leave him a half a foot, um, on the east side. And, um, he indicated that he gets a lot of drifting from the field to the north, and was hoping to have some kind of enclosure to keep his yard from filling up with snow in the winter.
So, is the metal panels, that's allowed by our code?
Uh, yes. It just has to be in good condition and made for outdoor use.
Thank you, council.
Holly, the, so the seven feet, I'm looking at one picture here where it shows the retaining wall, is that measured from the length of the fence, or, because the sidewalk is multiple feet lower than where the fence starts?
It's measured from the ground.
The ground where the fence is?
The fence is installed.
Okay. So, from the sidewalk or the road level, that's actually more like ten-plus feet probably in some areas?
Yeah, it's, it's quite a few feet higher.
Yeah.
Stephen, I'm kind of looking at, I think it's like page one oh six. Do you have visibility concerns, or Chief McKee can as we're, we're looking at this?
If a vehicle were to stop at the stop sign, there, between the fence and the retaining wall, there, there could be some visibility concerns. But if someone were to creep out, um, into the crosswalk, as vehicles tend to do, it does open up visibility to both the north and the south. But it requires you to creep out into the intersection to make that movement or that decision.
Stephen, are you, yes or no, is this a variance that you are in favor of or not?
It creates, it, it creates questions, that, that's why we added the pictures.
That's why I asked you the question. I mean, I, I, I respect your opinion, I'm just curious what it is.
It's hard to, it's hard to predict something that could, or maybe, or might occur, but by adding that fence, it's just another layer of difficulty in visibility. You can see, when you look to the south, there is a tree that, that causes a similar, but a tree doesn't require a variance.
Tree is worse than the fence.
So, the, the fence is what brings about this to the council. Living in that neighborhood in the past, it's, it's a very busy road, uh, yeah, it, it, it brings up a lot of concerns for potential problems.
So, isn't there an ordinance that wouldn't even allow this fence to begin with? Because if you have to creep past a stop sign to see, you know, the traffic, is, is there some kind of an ordinance that says this shouldn't even exist?
I didn't have to creep past the stop sign to see, but if you want to see more, you generally have to go past that tree to be able to see, so then you have a completely clear line of sight. If that tree was removed, then if you're stopping behind the stop sign, then it's slightly more limited from my perspective, but there's pictures here that show, I think...
And that's thirty mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour?
Joyce, to answer your question, there is an ordinance, that's why we have to approve a variance, which says, we know there's an ordinance, but we're allowing you to break it.
I wonder if some media, uh, middle ground here would be to put, uh, solar-powered speed limit sign right in that neighborhood, because people do want to go faster there than thirty. I just think, I don't know necessarily visibility, I, I see that fence every day, and I know there's an, you know, enough room between to not cause too big of a ha- hassle, but I'd, I'd think, uh, thirty-five, or thirty minute, thirty mile an hour solar-powered sign.
Where is the crosswalk? Is it right there at that intersection, and is it on south or north end?
It's on the south side.
Of the intersection, so it wouldn't be on the fence side of the intersection, it would be?
No.
Picture that shows the tree.
Because that is a, I mean, schoolchildren cross that road every single day at the crosswalk, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, the rub in this whole thing is the darn thing's built, and we're getting advice that we're not super thrilled with it. Is that where, is that kind of where we're at? So, this is a bad, this is bad all, any, any solution's bad?
Yeah.
How come the Planning Commission didn't get the fence pictures before? Or they got different pictures?
Um, they had the picture, the only pictures they didn't have were like the first two, I think.
Holly, did you say the north side of the fence is sheet metal?
The whole fence? Whole fence is sheet metal, wrapped in sheet metal.
Uh, whole fence isn't built yet.
Yeah, I mean, he's, yeah, I mean, it's not a, it's not a consideration for council, but he's using like, the most durable material you can possibly find.
Do you know which two pictures that Planning and Zoning did see?
Um, the Planning Commission members, if I recall, there were at least a couple who said they had seen this and had driven by, so they had experienced it themselves.
But they never saw the pictures at the meeting?
Um, they saw, I'm not, there were... The which ones? Yeah, the ones with the dates on, they saw.
Yeah, I added, the other ones stayed with the Planning Commission, not the ones that say September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Can we kick this back to the Planning and Zoning Com- Commission with, uh, and let the people who know more about it than us make a recommendation?
I like that.
Yeah, we have time.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to kick it back to the Planning Commission, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I have number fourteen, reviewing a fence, uh, or a very, uh, variance from Nick and Megan Crouch, uh, for fourteen, approving or denying it, Holly?
Uh, yes, this property is located at eight oh seven Thirty-Eighth Avenue Northeast. Um, let's see, the commission reviewed a request from Nick and Megan Crouch for a variance, uh, from our, uh, city ordinance, which limits total aggregate area of all accessory structures to eighteen hundred square feet for properties exceeding one acre in an R-one single-family residential district. The petitioner has requested a six hundred foot, square foot variance for a new twenty-four hundred square foot detached accessory structure. Um, the property in question is approximately three acres, uh, with this proposed addition. The total lot covery, coverage of the structures would be about six percent, forty percent is allowed. The Planning Commission, with six members present, recommended the variance by the following vote, uh, six aye and zero nays. Planning Commission, uh, made the following findings, that the requested variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. The variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated, that there are circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, and that the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance. Do you have any questions about their particular project?
Council, any questions? Uh, no, I've talked to Nick and Megan, I've seen the plans and what they are proposing, and, uh, I'd like a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved, thank you. I have number fifteen, is granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. Fifteen A, the address is eight oh seven Ninth Street Northeast, the Romero Alejo property?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen B, the address is fourteen oh seven Ninth Avenue Northwest, the Janning property?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fifteen C, address is seven oh seven Eighth Ave Southwest, the Dornic property?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Onto citizens addressing the council, is there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the council on items that weren't on the agenda? Elaine, welcome.
Hi, Elaine Hansen, I'm here on behalf of the Austin Area Chamber of Commerce. Want to thank you for working very hard on the budget. We, of course, would appreciate a little bit more, um, shaving off, but, uh, we do appreciate the hard work everyone put into trying to bring down the tax levy. Um, and looking at the tax levy, it's not just the cities portion, but also what we look at with the county and also with the school operating levy, so we appreciate if you can continue to look at that as further, uh, decreases would be great. Also wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Craig Clark, I had an opportunity to join him for some discussion about lost, and perhaps if that moratorium is lifted, what that might look like in the future, and so it's exciting to, uh, explore what that might be, so thanks again for that invitation, Craig, I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thanks, Elaine, appreciate it. Any other citizens here wishing to address the council? If not, moving on to honorary council member comments. An, anything to, uh, say?
Comment at all.
Okay, thank you, An. Uh, moving on to reports and recommendations, Craig?
I have nothing.
City council, let's start with Joyce.
Uh, welcome to An. That's all I have.
Thank you. Paul?
I have nothing, your honor.
Jason? I have nothing.
Nothing, your honor.
Chuck? Mike?
Uh, just a quick HRA update, um, Tegret was at a meeting last week where they were talking a little bit more about, uh, the new statewide local housing aid plan that has been developed. Um, it will be a program where funds flow to the city of Austin directly to work on, on low-income housing stuff. Um, we think that it's going to be roughly four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars worth of monies that'll flow over the next two-ish years, so looking at some different options as to what we could do with that money, but there's a lot of good options as you can imagine with housing.
Thanks, Mike. Laura?
Uh, I have a lot of updates.
Bring them over.
Uh, the Culture and Arts Commission is going to engage in some strategic planning, uh, tomorrow night, so thank you to the commission members and their staff liaison, uh, which is Holly Wallace, for an extra meeting to do strategic planning. They also celebrated, uh, the new mural on the east, uh, wall of the municipal pool building. That happened, uh, September eighth, and, um, it's a great accomplishment, um, for the commission, they were able to get the funding from that, um, for that project from C-Max, so no, uh, tax dollars went into it. Under Parks Recreation and Forestry, uh, Luke Reese is, uh, working really hard on some grants, um, to address the ash tree issues that we have. Um, we've already, um, received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the DNR. He's applying for a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Minnesota General Fund, and another five hundred thousand dollar grant from, um, uh, Bonding at the state level, uh, that's specifically designated towards trees. If awarded, uh, a, a million dollars would provide hundreds, uh, of new trees to make up for the ash trees that are going down. The only problem with that is we have thousands of ash trees just on city property, plus thousands of ash trees on private property, um, to deal with. So, um, just want to call your attention to that and say thanks to Luke, um, for doing that work. Uh, I also want to congratulate the, um, Human Rights Commission on their welcoming week, I think it was, uh, excellent again, and it's exciting to see so many, um, community groups involved with that. And remind you that, um, Human Rights Commission is leading the Pride Celebration Plan for October seventh, and, um, having the, um, welcoming week happen in September, and then the Pride, uh, early in October puts, uh, kind of a strain on the volunteer commission[1663.28]